Tell me what you got back there.
Either Dennis or Robert, do you want to call the role?
Sure, I'll do it. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, what is this? This is July. So I'm going to do the role Roxanne Cora.
Here, here.
Glenn Gaddali.
Present.
Michael Mitchell Cohen, I'm sorry. Scott McCarthy.
President.
Thank you. Harry Hanson. Cindy Lanzetta. Amanda Gatto. Drew Bages, I know Drew's here. Tom Wilken.
Here.
Mr. Baden.
Here.
Jared Brown. I saw you, Jared. Mr. Ferrero.
Here.
Ms. Welton.
Here.
Yeah, honestly, Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Mr. Mr. Amquist.
Here.
Mr. Markowitz.
Here.
Mr. Rudicoff. Mr. Rudicoff has excused my apologies. Mr. Travers. Mr. Murray.
Here.
I saw you, Mr. Murray. Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
And no representatives from the city of Kingston.
Mitchell Cohen and Amanda came on after you started the roll call just now.
Thank you. Who else came on? I got Mitchell. Mitchell came on. Who else?
And Amanda Gatto.
Oh, thank you. Okay, we have a call.
All right, excellent. Okay, well, hopefully everyone got a chance to read the minutes. Anyone, any corrections or comments about the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the McLaughlin.
I'm sure for a second.
All right. So all those opposed to approving the minutes? Any abstentions to approve in the minutes?
All right, this is Glenn. I abstain. I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay. Okay, so minutes are approved. Thank you, guys.
Who was the second on that? I apologize.
I'm Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Amquist.
And Dennis, it looks like Mr. Hanson has just joined us as well.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone have any educational or training opportunities to bring up? Okay, Dennis, are you still planning on doing some kind of training this year?
I do. And I think, you know, and I'll, I'll say this quietly, we, we just, we're just busy, busy.
Yeah.
So I have no, no qualms if somebody else wants to suggest that we do a training somewhere or has an idea for it and, and wants to, wants to move that forward. But I certainly can, I certainly could work something out and get, and get some training in. We're in the middle of budget right now. I've got budget stuff going, so it's been, if the board has anything that they, they want to do, let me know and I'll go from there. I, we should finish our Housing Spark Community work by the end of July, so we'll schedule something then. I'll leave it at that. If anybody says what, I've got a great training opportunity, we should, we should do this one, then let me know.
This is just a suggestion. We got many new members of the board and maybe it probably wouldn't hurt to push upon kind of like procedures and policies and stuff kind of similar to what you did a couple of years ago.
Sure, and we could make that short.
Yeah, of course.
And do it, and do it by Zoom, maybe an hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a thought that I had because we got many new members, so.
All right. So I'll try to, I'll try to look at something by the end of this month or, or into, into August.
Okay, anyone else got any training stuff they want to talk about? All right, moving on, the community reports. Tell you what, I'll, I'll start a couple of three things going on in Olive. At the last town board meeting in June, we, the town board did approve our new sewer use law, which would include the district, the new district in, in Chocan. We also approved the creation of the Chocan Sewer District. Depending on a referendum that we're going to hold on September 24th for the vote for the people that are within the district. So hopefully that goes forward nicely. Also, we started a, what I'll call a phase one of our comprehensive plan where we, we hired some consultants to start the reach out program for comprehensive plan. And that's supposed to happen during the summer and fall. And then we're going to try to apply for a grant to get, to finish that up for a comprehensive plan, hopefully next year or the year after. And the other thing that, that is going on, I haven't actually seen this, but there, the intersection of 28A and 28 in Boysville has been reconfigured to be a T. I'm making an assumption that that is a temporary situation to make it easier for the contractor to do his construction work on the new bridge. But it is, has been changed. It was a Y type intersection. Now it's a T.
So that's, that's, that will be achieved, Drew.
Yeah, I know it will be ultimately, but the, the current intersection has been converted to a T. And I'm assuming that, like I said, it, it facilitate the construction work. But anyway, if you happen to go through there, it's a little different now. That's all I got for Olive. Anybody else?
Harry Hanson from Marble Town, Town Board just passed a community preservation plan, which they're going to put to the voters later this year in the fall for preserving environmental farming and/or historic preservation projects to be funded with a tax on real estate purchases over, over a certain limit.
I think Gardener's doing the same thing, I think.
Yeah, Marble Town has, has approved it and they're ready to send to the voters for, for referendum.
Okay.
Does that require approval from the state legislature?
I presume so.
You know. Do you know what level they set for the tax to kick in?
I think it's 500,000.
Wow, New Paltz is 275,000, which is basically if you, you, if you, if you buy, you buy a piece of, yeah.
Yeah.
They have a list of.
Trying to put it on the upper end of the, of the.
Yeah.
New Paltz is based on the median for the county of the prior year, the 20, 12 months prior. So median sales in Ulster County the prior year.
Yeah, I think in Gardner it's 350.
It, it changes every year because of the.
Must have changed that from the draft and the draft I said had 275.
It, I don't think it was ever that low, but it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to change every year based on the, you know, sales. Yeah.
Okay, and did Marble Town do a, I'm sorry, did Marble Town do a, a list of properties?
No, we haven't done all this to properties, but, and they're still identifying the, trying to get a planner lined up and figure out what they're, what they're even interested in.
And Amanda, from, for New Paltz, did they ever do a map of the properties?
So they've gone to and they've looked at all, yeah, all the properties and they've rated them. They have a set of criteria that they got rated on. I think it's a 14-point scale. And then they've looked at where there's clusters of ones that have high ratings like that, but they've been trying to avoid identifying specific parcels. You know.
Well, I saw a list of parcels that they had identified.
I mean, they, they went through every, every parcel that had the opportunity that had, that, you know, they went through every parcel and identified against a 14-point scale where it rated for all kinds of things, you know, for habitat, open space, water, farmland, all these things, and then ranked them according to how they fell in that scale. So they have that list, but they have not really, I don't think it's been made like publicly available.
Now Marble Town has not gotten a list together. They have not even, they are planning to put a committee together to administer the thing, which won't happen until the referendum is passed. And they're trying to get a planner to line up to do the identification for the town.
What, what percent real estate transfer tax are they landing on?
I believe it's 1%.
Okay. I think two's the max. It's allowed understanding.
So I'll have to admit that today was the first I'd heard about this, particularly from the Gardner, because when somebody asked me whether Raul was looking at it, is this something happening across the county? Or is it a few towns here and there doing it?
It's happening through the valley.
Yeah. Yeah, then there was a change in state law that allowed Ulster County in, in, so the, prior to this, you weren't allowed to participate, but there was a change in state law in terms of the counties that could participate. So I think New Paltz was the first, and I know there's a number of other efforts out there.
Okay.
We got some stiff opposition from the real estate lobbyists out of Albany. When it happened, they came in and did a big push, but it happened during a general election and I think it was 70, it was 73% positive votes for it.
It was on the referendum, it was on the November ballot, correct, Amanda?
Right, during the general election, it was a referendum, right?
Ah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I think Drew, to answer your question, is the law, I believe, changed last year allowing it and, and what Dennis said is, is from what I remember correct, that New Paltz immediately put it into, into play and then other towns seemed to be starting to follow suit.
Okay.
We're actually looking at purchasing a very first piece of property with it. It's, it's a small property that was, I think it was on the county list for auction. So that's being voted on by the board and being presented to the public for public comment.
Yeah, we would be, I, I would be very interested in, in, in getting a look at the properties that they were identified. I, I have requested a map or a GIS layer just to see what properties they're, they're considering or have considered. But I haven't been successful in, in obtaining it. I'd be very interested in it. And, and, and for, for obvious reasons, for open space reasons, for priority growth area reasons, for affordable housing reasons, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, you, you know who's the chair, right, Caroline?
Yeah, I, I think I've made the request back through the supervisor, but I'll, I'll go in that, I'll try that one more time to see what's out there.
Okay, because yeah, Kara's definitely got it.
So what is the choice of uses for these properties eventually?
Well, it's for preservation.
Conservation is not.
Oh, just, but you were saying something about something besides open space? Or is it only open space?
No, historic preservation. They can.
Marble Town is a historic preservation as well.
Okay.
It can, it can be habitat, historic, it can be environmental aspects, it can be open space, ag, agricultural, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and there was a move afoot at the legislative level to extend it, at the state level to extend it to, to, you could actually use a tax on housing to actually do housing. But that, that, that never got passed. It was the, the former senator actually proposed that. Jen Metzger had actually proposed it.
I guess y'all heard what happened with our primary, right?
Okay, any other reports?
Yeah, Vincent here from Rogers, sorry. The only thing I'll say is the construction for the gas main replacement project is continuing. It's going to be a while before everything's done, but it's continuing slowly but surely.
Okay. Town of, Town of Rochester, we adopted the accessory dwelling unit law that we had sent up here, I believe it was last month or two months ago. We also adopted the six-month moratorium on certain types of building permits, subdivision, site plan and special use. With two possible three-month extensions, we did adopt the required modifications, and I'm sorry, advisory comments from the county that came with that. And as you probably see from the agenda tonight, we've sent our first six local laws tonight on the, on the agenda. The other thing is tomorrow night, the Town of Rochester is having a public hearing to establish two ambulance districts for next year to fund the two ambulance services that serve the Town of Rochester. So we'll be creating, if it's adopted and it's not challenged, but for referendum, we will be setting a development district, taxation district to fund both of those. And the average price per household comes out to, for one district, it's about $50 a year and the other one is about $60 a year for the average house. So the way I'm saying is it's a dollar a week to have ambulance service. So there's been very little, if any, questions. I, I don't suspect we're going to get much comment tomorrow night.
What, what's the reason for two districts as opposed to just one?
We have two different providers that cover different areas of our town based on the, the county's map. We actually have three that cover our, our Town of Rochester. Similar in a way, some towns have multiple fire districts. We have three ambulance areas of coverage.
Mike, do the, do the ambulances still charge even with it being in the district?
They charge if it, the two that we deal with charge if insurance pays. Neither one of them that I'm aware of charges an individual who is not covered by insurance, but if they can bill insurance, they do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, but their, their, their costs have risen substantially for training for all kinds of things and it's.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it, it, you know, those people that are on the rigs really have to have certifications.
Yep.
Where it wasn't that way before.
And Drew, I just, just give the Olive a shout out. The model that the, the Town of Olive has been using, their, their rescue squad has been utilized by an awful lot of people as the template for how to do it, so.
I, I would agree. I mean, in fact, I'm thinking it's like four years, maybe five years ago. Our rescue squad in town was not, it's not, we actually contract with them. It's not a town entity. But they were all volunteer and they couldn't really, they could only meet maybe 30% or 40% of their calls. To the best of my knowledge, when they shifted to a paid, where they pay their, their, their people and we upped it, we upped our, you know, considerably increased our budget to, to fund that. To the best of my knowledge, they've made 100% of their calls ever since then. It's worked out very well. Good. We got a good, good rescue squad in our town. All right, anyone else for community reports? Last call.
All right, Dennis, is this time to talk about the commemoration?
Sure.
You want me to kick it off?
Yes.
Okay. Kind of executive is launched a campaign to create a COVID commemoration, acknowledging what's taken place throughout the county during COVID. There's a group of people who are on this commission about a dozen or more from various areas of the county and various professions. I'm on that commission. And the idea is to create a place where people can go and reflect upon what transpired during COVID. And COVID hasn't left us, of course, but the idea is a place to reflect, not necessarily to memorialize the situation. Just a location of tranquility. The commission would like to see a spot that is wooded. The commission's decided not to do it in the city of Kingston, but somewhere in the, somewhere in the county would be a destination place for people to come and visit the site. A artist or artist will be commissioned to create some sort of artwork. And a landscape designer will be hired as well. This is being brought to the planning board and to the planning department because everyone here knows the county quite well, particularly our board members and the planning department. I'm on the location committee and we're trying to find the perfect spot to put this piece in. We've talked about many types of artwork that could go there. We discussed perhaps a linear type of commemoration where it would take place one rail trail. We'd have, at each stop, there'd be some type of placard or a spot to reflect and, and think about COVID. The objective is to make it accessible. Parking nearby would be a bonus. It can be on public, existing public land or on private land. We've got a pretty tight timetable. We're putting an RFP out this September for a call to artists. And I think what we're doing now is reaching out to you and in the community for suggestions. If you know a place in your community that would be the perfect spot to make this commemoration its home. We'd like to hear, hear from you. Promises to be a beautiful setting, going to engage students across the county to help create this as well as artists to lead the way in a collaborative way, collaborative manner. Help to get under construction by late winter, early spring of next year. And that's, that's the basic idea. What I'll do is I'm going to put together an email with Laura Nordstrom from the county detailing some of this information, these details, whatnot, so you can take a look and provide some suggestions. Again, we don't want it necessarily so out into the woods and require, you know, a great deal, a great trek into, visit the site. And we're not looking for something in a centralized location as well, so nice, nice middle ground. There needs to be, needs to be that. So we're taking this very seriously. It's a serious subject and we hope you can contribute some.
Thanks, Bill. That's, that's really great. And, and just, just just I want, I, I really would appreciate if the board would take some time to think about locations within your community and, and just to give you some ideas. You know, they should, they need to be publicly accessible, whether they're on private property or public property, but they, they need to be publicly accessible in my opinion. They, you probably want to think of where they fit contextually with respect to the pandemic. Is it some, something that, that, that would make people, give them an opportunity to pause and reflect on as part of their daily life about what happened? And, and, and what sacrifices were made by the various, the various people in terms of those that have lost loved ones, the essential workers, where we went when we didn't, when we couldn't see each other. And so if you think of that, then you start to think about places in your community that reflect those kinds of things. And I think the more responses that we get, the better opportunities we have to essentially find that, that, that spot that really makes a difference. And we've lost a lot of people in, in Ulster County and and it's changed, I think, forever the way the county is going to be viewed, way the county views itself and the way the county is going to be viewed by others.
All right, thanks, Bill. It's a good, very good project to be moving forward with. All right, I have no reports from the planning board at this point in time. Dennis, you want to take it with the financial report?
Sure, we're in, we're in budget right now. So we had our budget meeting yesterday. We went through our, our proposed budget. A minor increase compared to what we're currently doing this year. We have some new capital projects. So the short answer is, is we're in good shape financially right now. The county's in good shape financially. And we didn't get a lot of pushback on our proposed budget, so that'll, that'll take care of the financial report.
Good, all right. Anything you want to bring up on the environmental notice bulletin?
Nothing on the environmental notice bulletin. And if anybody has any questions, nothing on communications. And I would say that where we are on, I wish Bert was going to give you a brief report. He's going through the, the Ag District Four, which is up in the sorridies area, up in the upper, the lower Sopas Valley. So we're, we're, we're seeing a lot of pressure on, on farms, particularly with respect to the cost of fuel and the cost of, and the cost of, of fertilizer. So the county is exploring some issues with regard to farms, particularly whether or not there's a, a need to help farmers get through this issue that they're currently facing and a longer term need to essentially provide additional support within the county's soil, water, conservation district to help farmers navigate some of the grants that are available to them and, and some of the other, the other items that, that, that come up that, that farmers are. We, we have submitted an application for a farmland protection grant. We hope that that, we see an award on that soon. And if that's the case, we'll start on that effort prior to the end of the year. The one, the one announcement I did want to make was that the county, the county transportation council completed the, completed a study in the Shandakan area for a trail in the Shandakan area from Bel Air to Big Indian. And we put in an application for something called TAP. It's the Transportation Alternatives Program to fund the phase, first phase of that, which runs from Bel Air all the way, actually Highmount all the way down to, all the way down to the day use area on route, off of Route 28. That's owned by DEC. We got a notice last week that the project was funded, so we, we were awarded our full amount, $3.9 million in federal funds. We have about a 5.3 or 5.4 million dollar project, so the county has come up with about 20% of that, of that amount in order to essentially build that trail system. So we, we're, we're going to go to the legislature and ask for approval of those contracts when we see them and begin to essentially do the design work for that project. Hopefully have that started by the end, by early, I'd say late fall, given where we are right now. But that's a major win for us. It was one of the largest awards in the region.
Dennis, do you see down the road, years down the road, any, any, any way to connect that rail trail, that, that trail with the rail trail in Chocan? Rail trail, that, that trail with the rail trail in Shokan?
It, I don't think so. And the reason I don't think so is, is that I think I can get down to Big Indian. But there's so much missing along the stretch from, from essentially, once we get down towards Phoenicia. There's, I think, I would say a good half a mile, a mile of track that is now in the middle of the stream. And the stream has moved that far. So are there connections we can make? Yes. Are they easy? No. So it's, it's a, it's probably a decade of, or more to make those connections and, and. To be frank with you, the most important connection we can make, this is in my opinion, would be a connection to Kingston. To connect that way. And that connection is blocked by the currently, the, the CMRR railroad. And there's not a lot of options for that. There's not a lot of options to, to move off the railroad right away. And if CMRR remains in the right of way, there are. Major areas of that right of way where there are literally. Very, very expensive and difficult ways to essentially accommodate both the rail and trail. So that's, that's going to be a continuing challenge. Moving forward. And, and that's a choice, the choice for the legislature to make in terms of the use of that land.
Okay, thanks. Dennis, when did you want to address the comments to the DEP on the FAD?
I was going to do that under, I was going to do that under special projects, if you don't mind. Okay, I can do that now.
All right, did you, so, did you do, yeah, we might as well do it now.
Okay. So the. The state of New, the state of New York Health Department. Has something called a filtration avoidance determination. It's a FAD. By, and it was last updated in 2017 and those updates occur. Periodically and it's, it's due for an update now. And I provided the board with a set of comments that we would like to submit. From the board relative to what we've, what we're thinking about in terms of the review of the FAD. And they're, they're basically directed at, in three areas. The economic vitality and community character of, of the area. The comments there are in support of the study that is in the FAD, but also recognizing the fact that the current. Catskill Fund for the Future, which is, which is. Administered by the Catskill Watershed Corporation is anemic and it doesn't meet the city, and it doesn't meet the needs of the communities. So that's one of the, one of the main comments is to essentially go back and look at that and. And the city is, is saving billions of dollars by not having the filtration and. And, and the thought being is, is they need to, the, the original money that they put in is, is not sufficient for that fund for the future. The second major comment has to do with sewer or recreational opportunities and sewer and water. Let me just deal with this recreational opportunities. One of the things that we really want them to, to think about is continue to invest in. In the recreational opportunities within the corridor and, and they've done a good job on that. We. They, they helped us with respect to the art, but even so. I mean, they put in two and a half million dollars. The county put in somewhere in a neighborhood of about four and a half million dollars. And the rest were grants from other, from other sources. The, the, the thought being here is, is that they, we really wanted to think about investing in other trails and other recreational opportunities. That are out there and opening their lands up for recreation. It's a major economic driver in the, in the mountains. And it was a major, it was a major health and wellness issue with respect to the, the pandemic that we just, that we just went through. So that's the other thing. And then the other thing that we're, we've, we've made comments on. Is the flood buyout program in the, in the community planning program. I think one of the lessons, and Drew, you can jump in here. One of the lessons that Voiceville taught us. Where we lost almost an entire hamlet to a flood buyout program. Was not that, not that people that are in the floodplain shouldn't be able to sell. But it was more like th- there's not a, there's not a sense of, of when that happens, what, where, where do they go and how do we maintain essential services? You know, we may, we may lose grocery stores, we lost a doctor, you mainly, you, you lose, you lose some, you could lose other types of things. And so the thought being is, is that there needs to be an additional attention on. What happens in a flood buyout program, what community planning efforts are there? To essentially make sure that when flood buyouts occur, that, that, the, the users just don't leave. And so that's the, that's the comment under that. And, and also under. Under that community planning issue, we, we began the discussion on, on sewer. The sewer program that the city, that the city uses within there, and the Shokan is a good example. Generally takes place with, with regard to, it, it fixes the existing problem. And it restricts growth and new, and new, and new, and new. And new investments in, in, in community buildings or, or, or housing. And you really don't have smart growth is if, if you sewer the areas that essentially are problematic, which are generally the centers. In the community and then restrict growth in them. By, by putting your sewer, by putting restrictions on what your sewer plant can handle and who, who's allowed to hook up to it. So the thought being is, is we're asking you to go back and take a look at how smart growth. Sort of corresponds with their current, with their current sewer process and, and programming. And we think. That together, particularly with respect to Shokan and other areas, together, there's an opportunity. To start thinking about recreating hamlets that we lost like Voiceville or other areas. In that, in that, in that same way. So that's the comment on the sewer. And then the last, one of the, one of the final comments was. A comment on downstream impacts, the lower Sopas. And so what we asked them to do is, is to make sure that they understood that, that on the lower Sopas. There were. That, that the FAD can't overlook the fact that. The city's operations of its water supply has, and its ability to avoid filtration. Has, has dramatic impacts on, on the downstream people below the dam. And so we'll make this comment, I, I will tell you that it will not be picked up in any way, shape or form, but it's one of those. Those comments that you have to make. And so we will, we will make that, we will make that comment that basically says that, you know, the downstream below the dam. Needs to be put into the FAD and, and, and some of the ability of, of to use the expertise that's within the city. The city. Employee and staffing up there and the programming that's up there to use that on the downstream, on the downstream areas is, is. Is really important. It, they bring a lot of, they bring a lot of expertise to the table as well as just dollars to the table. And the idea that those people could work downstream and help downstream makes a whole lot of sense. That's the gist of the comments. I hope you've had a chance to read them. They were due the first of July. We have requested an extension so that the board could consider them tonight. And our apologies for getting them out late. But we thought it was important to do that. We did close this with, I, with one of the comments that we found from a former commissioner. That was responsible for the initial discussion with respect to. The, the FAD and, and, and working through the land use controls that exist. Up in the mount, up in, up in the watershed. And that comment was by the gentleman by. By the name of Albert Appleton. He's a former commissioner of DEP. And his comment was, the city had to make an environmental protection work for and with the residents of the Catskills. And so feeling its way, knowing it had to do so strategically, but by no means certain of how to do it practically. New York City set out to find ways to reconcile the most ambitious program of non-point source pollution control ever attempted in the United States. With the economic needs and cultural and social and cultural. Social and cultural. Materials of the Catskill Mountains. And what we've concluded is the current document appears to us to be a bit short in meeting the strategic necessity so aptly put by the former commissioner.
Very good. Dennis is some, is someone that's sort of impacted, impacted by a lot of this in our community. These are excellent comments. I would like to make one point, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting to change the writing. I just wanted to inform you on something. In your case on the historical stuff with the schoolhouse that was in Voiceville. I agree with DEP doesn't seem to pay any attention to that, but. We didn't make an attempt to determine whether that was actually. A historical building and I, I couldn't tell you who did this or, or who told us this. But because of the, the amount of modifications that had occurred internally to the building. It was deemed not to be of any historical significance. Although.
Finally did get a determination out of it?
Well. I'm, I don't know if it was an official one, but somebody that, that knows enough about this, and I can't think of the lady's name. Was the one that told us that because DEP just really doesn't pay much attention to it. It'd be something that the town would have to pursue. But I will tell you that Jim Sefranco, our supervisor, did manage to get the bell taken out of the. The schoolhouse and we have that in our possession at the town. So does anybody else have any, any thoughts or comments on the suggested response?
From a village historian's standpoint, those are excellent comments because, you know, unlike your. Along with many other communities, the village historian's been negatively impacted. By the, if you want to say, behavior of the DEP, you know, downstream. So. Yes, I, I totally support the comments as. You know, as are written.
So Drew, you'll be signing that letter, just so you know. So I mean, I can sign it for you. If you will, if you'll let me, otherwise I'll send it to you and you can sign it, assuming that the board passes.
Yeah, Drew, with Mike Bane. So I, I had a comment and then I also, I, I would make a motion. That the planning board authorized the comments to be submitted on our behalf by, by Drew and Dennis. My question. Are they required to hold a public hearing of, of any kind on this, when this is renewed or is this? Just a, a, a kind of a formula thing that they have to take written comments and they move on?
Let, let me, let me check up and I'll get back to you, Mike. I don't have the answer. Amanda's been involved in this and, and. This is a, this is a joint effort. Amanda, Amanda did a lot of the background research on it and I just did some wordsmithing, that's all. Okay, so I'll check with Amanda and let you know.
No problem. Yeah, I just didn't, if there was a public hearing of sorts or even a public meeting. A showing may help send a message to them, even though you're a hundred percent right. They're pretty much going to do whatever they want to do, so.
Okay, so, so Mike made a motion, I think Mark seconded it, or caught that right?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
Yes, Victor Markowitz, or sing, hello?
Yep, you can, you're kind of garbled, Victor, but go ahead.
He just muted.
You think you're muted, Victor?
Muted yourself, Victor.
Victor, if you could send it in the chat, because we can't understand what you're saying.
In the town of Rochester directly. Is there anything like that been noted in your reply? Can you hear me now?
We can now, before we didn't hear anything. It was just garbled.
Let's see. Where do we go with that? Chat, I don't know, more chat. Can you hear me now? All right, well.
You keep trying out there, Victor.
Turn your camera off and try it that way.
I think he left, did he leave?
No, he turned his camera off. He's down on the bottom. No, maybe it's.
I don't know.
All right.
He's muted again.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Hello, you're all garbled up.
Yeah.
Now. Let's, let's.
All right. I think we need to move on.
I'll send you a text. Yeah, let's move on.
Okay, all those opposed. Any abstentions? All right, so motion carries that will send these comments in. And Dennis, in order to save time, I would appreciate if you'd just sign my name for it.
Okay.
Okay, because I, I've got something going on in the morning. I wouldn't be able to get to it in the afternoon. I think it's important we get this out as quickly as possible. Since we're almost a week late. All right, you have other, other topics, Dennis, on special, special topics?
I'm fine. Thank you. I, I know we have a lot of zoning referrals, so I think we should get to them as soon as possible.
I, I tend to agree. All right, Robert, or the public comment section is, do we have anyone that wants to talk? I think you mentioned. There was a presentation. Do you want to do that now or later?
Does anybody wish to make public comment at this time? Raise your hand if you wish to. All right, just not. I'm gonna. Promote Emily Hamilton, though, to the panelist, though, because she's gonna present for RUPCO and I'm gonna move that to the top of the agenda, if that's okay with everybody.
That sounds good. All right, let's move on to zoning referrals then. It was in town of Ulster, right?
Correct. All right, and I have given her permission to share a screen too.
I will need to recuse myself from it.
Okay, any other recusals for town of Ulster?
I'm close, probably.
I'm close. I think you might be muted, Frank.
Recusal on I'm quiz.
Okay, so Vincent and, and Frank are recused. All right, Robert, let's go, move forward with the presentation then.
Uh, let me see if. Emily, Emily should have been promoted. Do you hear with us, Emily?
Yeah, I'm here. I didn't think I was going to be giving a presentation. But I mean, I can talk about, I can just talk about the project if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, if you just want to give us a basic overview, that'd be great.
Sure. So. The idea is.
Yes.
Why don't you put, why don't you put the, why don't you put the site plan up while she talks about it?
I can do that. Yeah, go ahead, Emily.
Sorry to interrupt, Emily. I apologize.
That's okay. So RUPCO is planning to convert the current quality in at 114 Route 28. To approximately 80 units of supportive housing. With the idea of housing those people who are currently living in motels in Ulster County. And it is a collaboration between RUPCO, Family Woodstock and Catholic Charities. We received a Empire State Supportive Housing Initiative Operating Award. It's a lot of words, I know. Also called ESHI. In December. And that will provide rental subsidy as well as funding for the supportive services. There's also a non-residential portion of the project and the former Rudigans Steakhouse. And the plan for that right now is most likely a combination of a cafe and perhaps. A thrift store. A thrift store. There'll also be supportive services offices and we're planning on maintaining the pool.
All right, so I guess.
Emily, can you talk a little bit about transportation?
Oh, yeah, that, that's a big one. Uh, so. Yeah, so that's. That's been something we've been focusing on since we um. We started looking at the idea of acquiring this property for uh. Supportive housing. Uh, so. RUPCO has applied uh for funding for um. Two vehicles, I believe um. For this project, um like we have at at Landmark Place. Um, additionally, the county uh will provide para-transit. And if the uh micro-transit grant is awarded, which we still don't know about that, Dennis, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, that will also be a possibility for um for transportation. But we do have funding for a driver as a part of our Empire State Supportive Housing Initiative. Actually, it's a full-time driver, full. One full-time driver and one half-time driver.
And Emily, why don't you touch on the uh sustainability features of it?
Sure, uh, so there will be a geothermal system. That will provide heating and cooling. It would also provide uh heating of hot water. Additionally, there will be solar panels on the roof. Um, I'm trying to remember what the estimate of the. Kilowatts are, I think it's around three hundred off the top of my head, but don't quote me on that. I I wish I had that in front of me.
Sorry. Right, and I know there are also a lot of green um stormwater techniques around the property as well.
Yes, we're taking the uh parking lot that's. Adjacent to the uh throughway and turning that into more of a a landscaped area. So getting rid of the asphalt.
All right, I guess I'll take over then. So, as you know, Route so off Route twenty eight, former Quality Inn, this is the site in here. This is the area that we're talking about. That's gonna be all landscape in this area. There's gonna be a trail going around the property as well, correct? Well, I'll bring that up. All right, so. As we said, there's a lot of funding for this. It's gonna be a net zero energy project with green infrastructure. Uh, transportation is brought up. There's eleven passenger. Um, ADA accessible vehicles, schedules to be determined, but they have a draft schedule that was in the application materials. Uh, and also on-demand access as well. Plus, they're playing on eighty hours of uh. Per week of transportation with designated drivers, so about ten to fifteen trips a day. Uh, two routes are proposed and also UCAT will have access via power transit, as Emily mentioned. Also, the infrastructure is currently private, but they're working with a partnership with the county and a town of Ulster to extend to that water and sewer districts. Where is sufficient capacity, I should add?
Yeah, and I I just want to add that the county um. RUPCO made an application through the town of Ulster to extend the water and sewer district to use county ARP dollars, ARPA dollars. And the come out, the county has committed two million dollars to essentially extend water and sewer.
Oh, wow.
So this is them, these are some renderings that we have or. Simulations that we have of it. So this is the um view heading toward the north from twenty eight. So you can see where there have ripped up that parking lot there and then, but then putting plants a lot of landscaping and different kinds of vegetation. And public access or I should say um resident access as well. Probably, and you can see the solar all on the roof as well. Uh, this is just another view of that, so you can see where the, all that previous impervious surface is going away. That's existing conditions. And that's the proposed site plan for the project. So no changes in access to twenty eight. Like I said, they're not proposing pedestrian access to it, but they're, they know that pedestrian access is. Difficult at best to go that way, so that's why they're proposing so many van trips to accommodate that need. Yeah, uh, Amanda, you have a question? You're muted, Amanda.
Sorry about that. Where's the geothermal going to be?
Um, I think Emily can answer that, or I could.
Yeah, I'm still here. Uh. And I wish I had, uh, so we actually met today with um structural engineers, botanical engineers, uh. Architects, interior designers, there's twenty people almost at the site today, um and they were talking about the number of wells. But I I I don't really know where they're gonna be. I would assume it's on the same. Side as where we're digging up the um asphalt to make that landscaped, but that would be my guess, but I don't know.
Mike, you have a question? Yeah, unmute Mike.
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry about that. With RUPCO servicing it, and I'm glad that's happening, but is there gonna be an outdoor uh waiting area for? Uh, I'm sorry, I said RUPCO, UCAT, excuse me. Uh, is there gonna be an outdoor waiting area for UCAT? For people to uh, you know, wait for the for the transit? Because if there is, I I would propose that it be something more than just those. Like chicken coop shelters that seem to crop up along two oh nine and the other roads.
Can everybody see the image I'm sharing right now, just?
Yeah, yep, yep, we see it.
Okay, it was Jared's study. You can only see the cover page.
No, we see it.
Just making sure. Okay, I'm gonna keep.
The short answer, Mike, is is that the it's under, it's under discussion. We thought that they were going to do something at the main entrance.
Okay.
Uh, but there's clearly, there's clearly an opportunity at the main entrance and and they had proposed to take the. Uh, overhang down over the main entrance, but there is clearly an opportunity at the main entrance in that lobby.
So when you say main entrance, you mean you mean on the building itself?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I just, it 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 just, it's frustrating that we were doing this great. Transit and then we make people stand in these, you know, uh, three-sided shelters that really look like they're for. For animals rather than people. It's, you know, when you look at what other commuter buses do and with their. Their enclosures, I we just need to start doing more.
All right. So just some more images of different angles of the the proposal. I'll just go through them so I can get to our comments. Mostly, our comments are of staff recommends strongly support with the project and congratulating the town. And RUPCO for going forward with this and on the grants. Uh, this is in the hundred-year floodplain. They are aware of that, uh, so they'll need a flood development permit with respect to it. Um, I was informed today, well, I didn't have a lighting plan, but I was informed today that all lighting is actually LED full cutoff right now. And they're just keeping it, so I'm gonna remove that lighting comment from here. So.
Yeah, and the building itself is not in the floodplain, but the the site around it is, so.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Second, McCarthy.
All right, we got a a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wondered on the lighting, if you could just make the comment that existing should remain as long as it's full cutoff. Or some, just at least. Yeah.
Yeah, I was I was emailing with Dennis Larios to, so.
Okay, thank you.
It was Watkins who made the second.
Yeah, I think so.
McCarthy.
McCarthy, okay.
Do we have bike racks and electric vehicle charging areas?
Oh, it's a good comment. We can add that, Amanda. It's a good comment.
There will be, there will be EV chargers. You've been doing that with almost every building that we've.
Right. Bike racks at this location, given that you don't want pedestrian access at this location?
Right, um.
There's no bike lanes on those roads?
No. No. They're not exactly bike-friendly.
There's not a pedestrian-friendly area at all.
No. No. But EV chargers, we'll definitely have. If for some reason the future becomes more pedestrian-friendly somehow. Um, or more bike-friendly, we would, we could add bike racks for sure.
Okay, I I have one question, maybe for Emily or Dennis. Sometimes some of these projects have a lot of um. Opposition from the community, local community. Do you know whether this has got any opposition or not?
A support letter from the town planning board, which I rarely see.
Okay, very good.
And we did a public presentation, uh.
Oh, wait, actually, that's wrong. That's from um, that wasn't from, that's from somebody else. I'm sorry.
So RUPCO did a public presentation uh the beginning of. June, um, and um, and that went pretty well. Uh, you know, most people's concerns are related to the other motels. Um, on twenty eight that are housing. Those that are homeless and they see people with shopping carts on Route twenty eight, but we. Can't fix that problem completely. What we can do is encourage people in those motels to apply. For this project, for this housing and get some of those people out of the motels, but I believe the county will continue to use those motels.
And to correct myself, that was a letter from the county executive to the Ulster Planning Board with a letter of endorsement, not.
Right, right.
All right, good. All right, so we have a motion to second. Um, all those opposed? And any abstentions? All right, very good. Motion passed it. All right, thank you, Emily, for your support.
Thank you for your time.
Hey, Robert, you want to move back to the topic with?
I'm gonna do that. That's why I stopped, temporarily stopped my share so I can more easily move to the top.
All right, um. Any recusals from the cell bus?
All right.
Yeah, I'm recusing. Yeah, I'm recusing.
Okay, how are you doing for both of the ones from the cell bus, Roxanne?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Robert.
All right. We go to Ariel first. There we go. Town of Sopas. What we have here. Bosie's Town Hall. And referendum last year. This site is where the fire department is moving. They're gonna be converting what is currently a driveway to a town road.
Uh, that's already been done.
Or, yes, that's already been done. So that will be a town road. Uh, let me go to a segment. So twenty six hundred, six hundred and forty-three square foot firehouse, thirty-three parking spaces. There'll be six bays. So I'll combine one building as opposed to those familiar with the area. Uh, Port Union has two different buildings. For their fire department right now, right on Broadway. Uh, and there's also be a hundred in hundred-person community room. So existing conditions. And that's the department, so. Trucks will go forward and go out on that driveway. There is. Yeah, so we have stormwater, we have landscaping. There is a stub road that goes here. This is currently vacant, but it's a separate parcel right there. It lines up with another residential subdivision as well, but. The other one is not developed. Lighting is fine. Barely standard layout design. For a fire department. So some comments, um. Cross access, so let me just uh go back to the aerial. So that access would eventually. Could eventually go across this. This is an undeveloped portion, which is residential, and then line up with this street here. And I guess would be, see it as a uh. Public road, but what we recommend is that all emergency uh calls be handled. As required modification, that all emergency calls be handled through this driveway. It's more direct rather than. Going through a residential subdivision. This is also pretty twisty and uh has. Elevations. So it can be steeped, especially in the wintertime. So just make, I'm sure that's what they'll do, but I'm sure during residential subdivision, they. Probably not prefer emergency calls unless it's to them through that access point. If it's ever developed. Right now, you have a whole another parcel that would have to go through anyway. Uh, other comments. Uh, consideration, this is from the, actually, the town planning board actually suggested this, but they coordinate with NISE dot and look at the possibility of a. Signal with the uh. At this location, to consider whether it be for emergency, so it'd be flashing yellow and most times been an emergency, they can make it a red. So they should coordinate with uh NISE dot on that. Let me go back to my recommendations, and that was an advisory comment. And then just uh our require modification if there are any sustainability features with respect to the fire station, if there is any opportunities for solar. Alternative heating sources.
Well, the other one, the other one is, is. The other one is um.
EV charging stations.
To do it.
Volunteer farm.
Making sure they have a generator.
Yeah, backup generator as well. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, only that.
Motion to support that, McLaughlin.
Second, Mike Baden.
Couple of questions. Uh, sorry, sorry, Mike.
Yeah, Rob, I just wanted to say if we should add compliments of consolidating and getting it off the main street, I'm sure this is gonna make the uh. The uh um turnout much easier for the volunteers.
Than the current probably, but I mean, most fire access you see are directly on a major route, which is like a straight access, so. But I guess.
Rob, did you say you're gonna hit that comment in there about the generator?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
I believe, I'm pretty sure they already have one. I'll make it. I'll put it, I'll double check and I'll put it in there, if they don't.
Brilliant idea.
You talked about a hundred-person greeting hall?
Yeah, it's a meeting hall. It's a, it's a um community room, I should say.
Okay, so is it just for, is it for events? Is it for?
I told, it said was community room. That's the only reference to it I have.
Okay, my only question is if they do a two fifty club dinner or something like that, is it big enough to hold it? A hundred people's kind of light.
Yeah, well, then. The fire department should make fire code, need fire code with a number of people inside the building.
I understand. You know what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, uh, what about water mitigation off the roof? Anything, any plans for that? Rain gardens, but not?
Uh, let me go to the sideline real quick. I mean, there was underground water tension. I think I had that in here. Let's see, did I bring that slide in? Yeah, so, so it goes off and. I'm not really seeing rain gardens, but it looks like it's underground. Is way to handle it.
That that roof produces a lot of rain.
Right.
A lot of water.
So we can, we can add that, we can add that to sustainability comment, alter, you know, and um. Low-impact design techniques.
Yep.
What's the parking situation? If you've got a hundred. Uh, person event hall.
What's the parking situation, if you've got a hundred uh, person event hall?
They also have access to all the town hall parking, which is. There's plenty, there's, there's plenty of parking on the property. I'll go back to Ariel just to show you. So you got, I mean, say got this, this, and behind it as well. Town Hall also has a community room in there as well. Manny, you have a comment?
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the amount of trees that'll be cleared. Have they done a survey or given an indication of how many trees will be removed?
I haven't seen anything type of that.
Alright, it may just be something we want to consider to add to sustainability is to replace. Um, trees that are removed in some, possibly in some other part of town, but to have some kind of a, you know. The ability to. To not remove trees, to, you know, to, to substitute other trees for trees that are removed somewhere in town.
Not sure how to, maybe as an advisory?
Yeah, that's what I would do, Rob.
Yeah, I mean, it's like they wanna do some transplanting of trees, maybe they can do something like that, I don't know.
It's a, it's a mitigation measure, it's a mitigation measure that, that it's picked up, I mean, if you're doing federal aid projects. And you cut certain, once you go over a certain size, I can't remember what it is, it's usually a tenth of an acre. They require, they require mitigation, and the mitigation is essentially, you pay into a fund at the federal level, and then they plant trees elsewhere. Uh, on, on, on federal highways, federal aid highways, here the town could do sim- similar type of thing.
Yeah, that's a very, that's a good comment, and it's a very wooded site, so.
Yeah.
Alright, hopefully that's all the comments, so we have a motion, the second, um, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Very good, motion passes, good. Dennis, I, I asked you this question once before, but is. Is it really required for the fire department to come to the, their, their planning board for approval on, on something?
They, they probably could, the, the short answer is, is that. It probably could have avoided approval, but they couldn't avoid coming to the town for. They could, they could invoke something called a balancing of public interest tests.
Right.
But I don't think that they can avoid the town altogether.
Got it, okay.
And in this case, the town, they have a little bit of past precedent with the library, library went through site plan too, so. And this is just another special district when it comes to it, they wouldn't do it again, one.
And the town can, the town can also waive certain things also.
Yeah.
To help with.
Use tables and stuff like that, yeah.
Right.
Drew, the short answer is, uh, districts like fire, s- schools are exempt. Municipalities are exempt, but fire districts unless they're a service of the municipality are not exempt. But like everybody said, they, they can relax the standards.
Right, okay, very good. Alright, onto the next assault, Roxanne still recused, okay, Robert.
Alright, this is an area variance for, for Lighthouse Village Apartments, and it's a uh. Ten unit variance, so basically they wanna build eighty units. And it's just down the road from where we were, off of Clay Road, access will not be off the route, actually there will be a little access. From Clay and from, I believe Route nine is W as well, but it's these two parcels here. Um, let me annotate that, these two. And are pretty standard apartments, four buildings, twenty units, sixteen two bedroom. For one bedroom per each unit, so eighty total. Um, I'll show you the site plan, we're gonna, this'll come back to us for site plan, we're gonna make that. Definitely a comment, because we're, we have a lot of comments when it comes back through site plan, and let me show it to you. Alright, so eighty unit apartment, like I said, four buildings, twenty units each. I need a variance, I should say, so that's what it's gonna look like, so we'll have one access from. Route nine, and then it goes around about to Clay Road and lines up here with. Uh, Lindar Street, which goes back toward um, this elementary school, I believe, so you have that, so. I mean, we're gonna have a lot of comments on this, this, the design, the layout, I mean, there is pedestrian access throughout it, but. There's definitely better ways to lay this out. We'll have sustainability counts, we're gonna give them a whole list of things that we're going to be looking for in site plan reviews, and they do that. Our comment, though, when it comes to area variances, we're not opposed as staff. To say you should have, you get your variance, but we do wanna say is that if you're gonna get a variance. Or apartments, you probably should make them all affordable unit. So, and that is what we're gonna recommend is a requ- a require modification is that. Those units that get a variance should be set aside as affordable. And uh, we're gonna make a whole bunch of comments about what different things we're gonna be looking for in site plan review phase.
Okay. We have a second? Alright, very good. Any other, any further discussion on this, just for the variance? Okay, all those opposed? And any abstentions? Alright, very good, motion passes. Okay, now we're into Gardner with the Fitzpatrick, any recusals from Gardner? Okay, Robert, it's all yours.
Alright, so here's your existing site, there's a warehouse, and here it is the main street and. Garner, this little site here, which is right next to the rail trail. They wanna put, they're gonna improve it, already has access on the state route, the curb cut and pedestrian access, they wanna put two food trucks. Uh, let's see, so PowerPoint, come back to me. Alright. So two food trucks, signage and picnic tables on site, there's also. Parking, I believe, on the state route as well at that location. I can zoom in a little bit on it. So there you go, so eight spaces for food trucks, you got gravel, I mean, not a lot to comment on. One comment that I'm not seeing, actually that I might have is, is a dumpster location. You know, I think we should make that as a comment. Not seeing a dumpster. If they need one, I don't know if they'll need one, it's food trucks, they'll have garden cans, they'll take them offsite, um, require modifications, health department for food truck permit. And if they're gonna have outdoor, le- um, evening hours, they should have some lighting details as well.
Motion to approve staff comments, Mike Baden.
Second, Vivian.
Great, thank you, uh, any further discussion?
Rob, are we asking for bike rack or anything like that? I guess if somebody was coming, they wouldn't necessarily need to park their bike, but.
I can ask for a bike rack, why not?
Okay.
It's in town, it's right next to a rail trail.
Yeah, that's.
People will be parking there, why not have?
That's where I was thinking, yeah, being next to the rail trail, you're gonna get bike, bike traffic as well as vehicle.
Absolutely, that's what it's catering to.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, good, motion passes. Alright, Town of Hurley, any recusals?
Alright, Town of Hurley is proposing a chicken and bees law, so this is basically standards for keeping these on your property. So they're amending the zoning statute, which has a new section entitled Keeping of Bees and Chicken. And it'll be allowed, so chicken only be allowed in the R one, R two zones only, minimum lot size will be three quarters of an acre. Six hens, no roosters, guinea hens or peacocks allowed, sale of eggs only incidental, uh, no sale. Sell otherwise, fifty but setback for the coop from the property line, has to be roofed and properly ventilated. Really, there's, and you know, so it's different standards for keeping these two items. Get back.
You go, Rob.
Sorry, it's scrolling on me, okay, and then bees are also R one, R two district. And then all sorts of regulations where the hive may be, where it may not be visible, how they have to be screened, how they have to be kept. Um, then details with, if they have any aggressive bees and what has to be done with them. There's no county impact on either, on, on this law.
Most new. Do we wanna make a co- Rob, do we wanna make a comment that that should be consistent? That they need to provide the necessary exemption for ag districts?
So. Consistent with um, Ag and Markets law, is that what you're saying to me?
Yeah, cuz if somebody's in an ag district, they would, they, they probably wouldn't be subject to this.
Okay.
And they should be.
So you want, we'll make that advisory or require mod?
I think it's a required mod.
Okay, required mod, then, um, has to be exemption for Ag and Markets, if you're an S, state certified county agricultural district. Do we have a motion on that? I didn't see.
That would be Scott McCarthy made the motion to accept F recommendations.
Do we have a second on that? I didn't see.
Fuck, somebody did.
Okay, now we can have a discussion, sorry, it's Drew.
Rob, I, I just have a question, do they give any sort of reason for the not visible from the public right away? I mean, I don't really see a problem with.
We were, Dennis and I had just the same exact discussion, and we're.
Same exact discussion.
I, I, I would, I'd like to add an advisor comment that they reconsider that, because what is the impact? It's, it's, you know.
It's nature. It may, it may be that they don't want it visible cuz they don't want people being attracted to beehives.
Maybe, I, I'll be honest, I think it's there because they don't want people to see it, that's my feeling, but.
Well, there's. Over regulation.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I understand the reasoning behind some of it, but I, I think it, it strays into the. Overregulation, as Mark put it really well, I, I would like, you know, I think we should add an advisory to reconsider that. Or, or say, you know, what, i- it doesn't strike me as it's a health and safety reason.
It actually could be detrimental to the bees traveling if it's put in the wrong place.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, they don't want the bees to travel, like there's can only be one water source per property or something like.
I, I, I mean, traveling to get wherever they need to get pollen.
Got it.
It, it strikes me as it's, it's a law that's written because of a, in, a situation that occurred somewhere, but I. I don't know that for a fact, but. This is the first I've heard of regulating home bees, but.
So like, are you, are you proposing an amendment to do that?
Yeah, I'm proposing we amend it to take, to, to uh, give an advisory comment that they rethink that. Requirement of not visible from the public right away.
A six feet barrier, they, there is a lot of regulations that say that a six foot fence is a eyesore.
Yeah.
I mean, I agree, I think we should uh, pu- uh, put that advisory comment.
But did, did that, is that six foot barrier, when it says screen, does it mean to protect the bees, or is that to be not visible?
It, it's green usually means not visible, so.
Yeah.
Cuz you know, I'd be worried more about the bears getting to them than about the, anybody seeing beehives.
Yeah.
What's that, and I don't understand the maximum number of hives. Is reasonable and manageable number, that's very like, not.
They're leaving it completely up to the uh, zoning enforcement officers discretion based on topography. Land, all that, so they're just case by case basing it.
Well, there, there is an appeal process to that, so you know, I, I get it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I, it just appears to me that it's, it's uh, as Mark put it, it's a little bit, it strays into overregulation.
So we have Rob's comment with, so we, we have Rob's comment relative to ag, and we have Mike's comment relative to. Uh, visibility from, as advisory, we ready to go forward on that?
Yeah, who, whoever made the motion?
I, I made the motion, I made the motion, so we'll accept it as amended.
And Vivian made the second red one.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, any further discussion?
Uh, as someone who uh. Put through a local law in those New Paulson, and a beekeeper, uh, it might be possible for these uh. Beekeepers to post signage that there are bees on their property.
That'd be a good mitigation instead of screening them.
Yeah, signage will also help if somebody gets stung and approaches the, the hives and. Litigation.
Alright, so now I have an advisory comment with respect to signage, anybody, everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that for sure.
Alright.
Yes.
Alright, alright, okay, so all those opposed?
Watkins opposed, overregulation. McLaughlin. I do, I do like, I do like all the changes, I really do like all the changes, but I'm, I'm still gonna say no.
I'm gonna no as well.
Wilken, um, I agree with Mark.
So, you're, when you say no, you're disapproving our comments.
I'm it, not.
Not approving the law, just so you know.
I'm against.
My, my disapproval is with the law, not with our comments, and that's what I said, I agree.
But that's not what we're voting on.
And I also agree with the changes that were made to the county comments, I disagree with the law.
I think we still have fourteen yeses though, Rob, so.
Okay.
They do.
Okay.
Alright.
Got it.
If, if you don't mind though, for the clarity of purpose here, we're, but we're not voting on the law, we're just voting on the staff recommendations.
Correct, right, so there's no purpose in going no on the staff recommendation.
That's, that's alright, he voted no, let him know.
That's okay.
I get it.
You know, you know, I'm gonna tell you guys something, you know, there's principle things, and you know what, just like you're doing comments. You could explain why my comment is no.
Yeah.
Just like you do with your comments that you put into every, every application. And I think that would be fair. Because I'm not disagreeing with the county comments, I'm disagreeing with the law as overregulation. So please put that as a no, you can put my name on it, and you put what I said.
Is there, is there a procedure by which we can say that we disapprove of the law?
You can disapprove of the law rather than make comments on it, that's what the, you just took a vote. You can always make a vote. Carry to make the comments, not, not to disapprove the law.
Okay, but do we ever take a vote whether to approve the law?
We have a resolution that.
Vivian, we don't have that legal authority to approve or disapprove a law, we can, we can disapprove, and then. The, the board can override us, but we, somebody would have to make a motion to disapprove. In order for that to happen, cuz we're only authorized by the law to give comment. So we don't have a say on the law, yes or no.
Dennis, is it too late to make a motion to disapprove it?
No.
Yeah, you already have, you already had a motion that carried with, with the comments.
Yeah, so, alright.
But can we reconsider it to take the vote to disapprove it?
It's already good, it's already carried, Vince.
No, it's already carried, Vince.
It's carried, Vince, it's.
I don't know, that's all.
Yeah.
Alright.
Next.
Okay, next.
We got a lot of referrals, so we'll try to move this along.
Okay, we're still with Hurley with uh, the Luke Le- LeBreen, any um, any recusals? Okay, Robert, it's all yours.
Okay, so this, we've reviewed this before, it lapsed. Yeah, we're doing it together.
Thank you.
So two platform tents, doesn't need health department approval. So two platform tents doesn't need Health Department approval because it's less than five sites and they're not you doing any water sewer hookup on the site. I believe this one is no county impact. Yes, no county impact on that.
Don't move, Watkins.
Second.
Uh Vivian?
Yes, second Vivian.
All right.
All right, any further discussion on this one? All right, uh.
Drew, just to clarify, was was Mister uh um. Cohen uh recused on that just cuz I I know he's on by phone.
He's no longer on the count on the town of Hurley planning board.
Okay, that answers that, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Good. All right, um, okay, all those opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion passes for both. Site plan and and special use. All right, now we're in the town of Lloyd.
McCarthy recuses for the next five, I think it is.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Robert.
Six, sorry.
The Viz Garden Center, this is a former mini golf and ice cream shop. That's closed down, uh accesses, there's a local road that accesses two ninety-nine. This is the site here, and then there's a driveway onto that local road, this is the site here. No changes in the parking, they're going to be converting it from the former use. Let me go to my PowerPoint. So their existing buildings are gonna remain, convert to sales and office space, no new impervious surface. No real changes to the building itself. That is an existing conditions, access on the Luna Lake Road will be the sign. And now it's gonna be a path with it's a landscaping center, so it'll be landscaping for sale. There's no county impact on that conversion.
Motion to support with McLaughlin.
Second, Baden.
It could, any further discussion on it? All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Terrific, passed.
Aaron.
We're through two pages out of nine, guys.
We'll keep it going. Okay, so McCarthy already said he's.
Yep. This is the um party itself storage.
Right, so existing self storage center, and let me bring up the arrow real quick. Next, okay, so Mid Hudson Bridge. Existing, they're going to, it already has a. Rear yard variance that was not referred to county. That should have been referred to county. The building is going to be located. In this location here, so it's pretty tight on site, so eleven thousand eleven thousand square foot building. These are residences that do adjoin this. So. Go to PowerPoint.
Rob, clarify, you said it wasn't, it's got a variant, building that's not.
It has an approved variance that was not referred to the county that should have been.
Okay.
So that's gonna be one of our comments.
Thank you.
So that's existing, so as you can see, it's right up against the property line there.
Oh my goodness.
Second comment is require mod on adequate fire access around that, they have a walking sidewalk around the building. But no vehicles can get around that. I they'll have to demonstrate from the local fire district that they have access to around that building.
Dorm water as well, Rob.
What?
Nothing, go ahead, keep going, I apologize.
They're extending the lighting, lighting is fine. So rear yard variance, that should be referred to us and uh fire access and. Then they should.
Drainage, right, Rob? We got a drainage comment on that. We had a drainage comment on that, right?
No, we did not, we didn't, did we discuss that? I don't think we did.
I thought we did, I apologize if we didn't, cuz it's adjacent residential.
We can make one.
Lighting comment?
Yep.
Lighting is fine.
Lighting is good.
Rob, how do we, or Dennis, either one, how do we handle the variance? Should we say it should be sent back to the ZBA for proper referral?
Yes.
Because if the building hasn't been constructed yet, it's it's still fixable.
Right.
So should we say the planning board shouldn't approve it without it properly referred?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, planning work, the planning board can approve a site plan regardless of whether it's consistent with the zoning statute or not.
Okay.
That's what the that's what the courts have said, but we will tell them that the variance should be referred.
Okay, thank you.
Technically, the building inspector can't issue the building permit. And we're gonna add a drainage comment to this.
Drainage and also as part of that rear yard, we're gonna talk about screening and making sure that's adequately screened back there as well.
Okay, so move Mike Baden.
Second, McLaughlin.
We need it. Thank you, Vince.
Good, any further discussion?
Kanye when I need him.
Yeah.
Email me, email me today to tell him to take him off the other another yet another list because he was still on it, that's.
Yeah, I saw that.
But that's where Kanye was. Anyway.
All right, all those opposed? Any extensions? Very good, passes both of both. Okay, now we're on to still Lloyd and Scott still recused, this is the roadway in solar project.
Right, this is for the next two, this is for roof mounted solar on an existing hotel. So. And this is something to be uh considerate, I don't. This is the kind of thing that if it gets the site plan review, this is something for consideration for our exemption list. I'm trying to get back here to it. Come on. Freeze on, nope, oh come on. It's a really big presentation, so it's moving a little slow. There it is, so no county impact on roof mountain solar.
Motion, McLaughlin.
Second, Baden.
Excuse me, uh how about um charging stations? Are they gonna put any in?
That's not a part of the application really, so I don't think we can make them do that.
It is site, it is site plan review.
Well, I'm just thinking if you're putting in a solar panels array and you may wanna think in that same direction.
Right.
For your customers who are driving electric vehicles.
I'll check it out, most of the hotels are doing it voluntarily, if it's a hotel, they kind of been installing them on their own.
Just an idea.
Yeah.
I'll I'll add it if you wanna make an advisory comment.
I'm fine with it.
Vince, you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
So what?
So we had an advisory comment with respect to uh with respect to charging EV chase EV stations.
Okay. Okay, all those opposed? Any extensions? Very good, oh, it passes. Okay, still went Floyd, local law number uh local law F.
Do you have to recuse from this, Scott?
Yes, I am recused from this also, I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, this is zoning statute amendment, the town Lloyd's enacting um cannabis marijuana retail sales and lounges laws. Generally consistent with the uh New York State law. Uh so what they're doing in this case, they're gonna allow by um the retail and dispensary uses by special permit. And our CBD, BLB, LI, HB, both are walkway gateway districts. And but the lounges will only be allowed in the light industrial zone. Standard following the um law, not allowed with any five hundred feet of any school pre K for twelve. That also includes daycare facilities or any facilities where children congregate, so that also includes playgrounds, youth services. Dance schools, pride school, things of that nature, Hudson Valley Rail Trail specifically exempt from that. So. Uh also not within five hundred feet of any establishment, um other such establishment. Uh drug or alcohol rehab facility, correctional, similar facility, house of worship. So, you know, it was generally consistent with the state law. Um my only comment is that. I don't believe it actually referenced. Slow again. Come on. Back. Okay, so their establishment section should actually reference the state statute to make sure it's consistent. And that all facilities designed in accordance with New York State licensing requirements. And just a reminder, and I don't have that in there, but I'll just remind it that the zoning law must be. Not so restrictive as to exclude. Um them from the zone, so if they have, if the buffers are everywhere, five hundred feet, five hundred feet, so that. They find it practically that they can't place more than one of these in the town. They might have to revise that, so.
So move Mike Baden.
Second, Vivian.
All right, any further discussion?
So this is consistent with their comprehensive plan?
It's consistent with them not opting out. So that so by not opting out, they basically have to enact this law.
Yeah. Okay. All those opposed? Any extensions? Very good, motion passes. Okay, now we're on to uh town of New Pauls, any recusals?
I'm recusing, yeah.
Okay, thanks Amanda.
Speaking of um marijuana dispensaries, here's one. Uh Farmer's Choice, it's five thousand square foot building, I'll bring up the aerial.
And here we are.
Farmer's Choice.
Yes, Farmer's Choice, so North Ohioville Road. Currently dead ends. Over here, this residence is going to be demoed. And it's going to be a new dispensary there. It's currently split between three zones, so there's a petition before the town board currently to make it all GC. Uh it's all complies with that zone standards. Um I believe we actually reviewed that no county impact, this made sense to make it all one zone. But we'll also have a comment that. That they may, they need to do that. Uh let's see, let me go to our. Comments. Take off. So five thousand square feet, retail and thirty seven spaces. Okay.
Rob, is that number of spaces based on their codes? It seems like a high number of spaces.
It is.
I said the same thing, Mike.
That that was a comment in the statute that they had, they felt they had a lot of spaces. Um and that they weren't quite meeting the um landscaping requirements for the in the parking lot. So there's some landscape, they need to provide a lot more landscaping on it, the uh. The lot as well. Uh we have a shipper response that. Road assigned off on it, traffic memo twenty-nine additional trips during the peak hour. Um let's see, also we have, so that's the site. So it's built to the street, has pedestrian access.
Does their code allow le- less spaces, li- allow the planning board to lower the number of spaces? Based on the use?
Uh let me, let's look at the uh.
I'm sorry.
Let's look at the parking environment here, so. Total, actually, let's see, so twenty-eight is the minimum required, thirty-seven is provided. So to me, they should try to strive for the minimum and produce less impervious surface. And increase their landscaping.
Uh. High hopes for business?
It's high hopes for business, yes.
Wha- wha- what are your comments, Rob?
Yeah, sorry, going on, that's what it's gonna look like, it even has a silo. Landscaping, lighting is okay. So Health Department for waters for um water sewer signage details. Need to perfectly provided, the landscaping, so we need more detailed plan, one that actually meets the town. Town standards, we said substandard for that needs to actually have like a ten percent of the parking area needs to be landscaped. Navy species, things of that nature, also more opportunities for um low impact design.
Can we add to that, Rob, the recommendation that they go go to the minimum number of spaces required because that's.
Yeah.
That's significant, nine more.
Yeah, I think I think we should.
Thank you.
The two comments would would one would be the minimum parking spaces and two would be bike rack.
Right next to you. Yeah, we'll do that. And so.
Right next to the Empire Zone, Empire Railroad.
Look at sustainability for the use as well, and then I also made the advisory comment about the zones. And as we said with Lloyd proposal, the the planning board can indeed. Grant site plan completion, but no permit can be issued until the zoning change is complete.
With the changes.
Rob, could I see the parking design once more if you wouldn't mind throwing that slide up?
That word?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
It we have a, we have a motion, I think Mike made it, we have a second?
Sorry.
Put the motion in second.
Baden made the motion, I don't know who seconded.
I tried this, McCarthy. Either either or, Watkins or McCarthy, doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, but what's GC?
You see general commercial, I believe.
Okay, we don't have that, but okay.
All right. All those opposed? Any extensions?
GH, I should say.
All right, pretty good.
Gateway Business is what it's.
Business.
Yeah.
Okay, so that motion passed. Amanda, you're still recused on the next one too, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Robert.
We done with that one?
Yes, next with Rob.
Thank you, town of New Pauls Storage, this is a proposal, this is an approved site plan for, it was all going to be a three story. Self-storage building, it's only gonna be one. And based on the photo I've seen, it's pretty well landscaped. I believe it's already there. Um so, but no county impact on reducing it from three stories to two stories. It's well landscaped, guys, you can see.
Motion, McCarthy.
Yeah.
McCarthy, you're second?
I'll be a second.
But who's the first?
That's great.
Vince, Vince was at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Good. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those opposed? And any extensions? Very good, motion passes. All right, now we're on to the Village of New Pauls, any recusals?
Yeah, I'm recusing.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Okay, Robert, it's all yours.
Sure, I seem to have found my way in the placicle instead of New Pauls, though. Ah, that's why, cuz I don't have a image that, we reviewed this many times already. So this is very, it's also a. Let's see, hang on. There we go. Okay, so going back here, so Five Particle Avenue, we reviewed it. A bunch of times for um to convert into a restaurant. What they're doing is they're gonna take the back wall, and since it's uh. Encroaches on a rear yard setback, they're basically gonna remove the wall and redo it for aesthetic and structural purposes. There's no county impact on the rear wall of the proposed building.
Motion to carry staff.
Second, Baden.
Okay, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any recusals? Good, passes. All right, Robert, next one is the rezoning.
Yep.
Still recuse.
Yes. So, we saw this several months ago. And basically, we're given a list of ninety two parcels at the Village want to rezone so that the uses were there, matched the zoning district that they were in, this is a fine idea, but we didn't actually have a map. The town had villages now, since it's a map. So and then after reviewing the uses, that makes some sense. So, this is what we looked at last time, where they were gonna move things to our two, these were in B one, they're gonna be our two, these are our one. These are all gonna be B one. These are all gonna be B two. These were residential districts, so now we have a new zoning map, they've complied with that. Comments were that they did, also that they didn't provide seeker last time, now we've addressed that comment. They've addressed the map comment, the local law does, still does not link to the comprehensive plan regarding these zone changes, they should include that in the local law that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, goes to X, Y, Z. And that would be required modification.
So move Mike Baden.
McCarthy second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes, very good. All right, we're still with uh
Now we're gonna plague it.
Oh, let's take it back, sorry. All right, Placal, any recusals? Okay, Robert.
All right, okay, so this is a proposed, another proposed self-storage and U-Haul rental facility, it's thirty two south, this is a existing, unnon-utilized barn at the moment, that's gonna be converted as the first portion of the project for self-storage use. An office space. Uh, let me, put back. Say plan, so, you're gonna reface the existing barn for self-storage. And it'll be two new twenty by seventy self-storage buildings on the property. So, that's proposal. So you have the two buildings, you have the barn, and they'll need access from Route nine W. They have a lot, they have some lighting which seems to be from it, but they don't show us what the lighting type on the uh the uh, buildings themselves are, so those will need uh, photometrics and cut sheets and dark sky compliant details on.
Rob, while you're on this, you said it's gonna be a U-Haul facility as well?
Yeah, I'm not seeing, it says U-Haul, but I'm not seeing where
Yeah, that's my comment. Location of parking of those vehicles and speaking from experience, that becomes a real problem if it's not marked on the site plan.
Right, and I was actually renting a U-Haul this past weekend, and there's no, usually what they do is they have a pull-out area, a loading area, and then kind of like departure line, this does not seem to have any of those features with respect to it, so they should really
Wait, I do see U-Haul parking fourteen up top, but
Fourteen up top. Yeah.
Phase one. They also have a gravel parking in the back. Which I, which is hard to tell, so it's hard to tell how many parking spots they really need, and how many pa- are parking spots are for uh uh for display models, basically.
No, there's no room for display up front, but there, I guess, we have fourteen spots were on the side.
Also, from, from experience, Rob, the, having it like that, they usually will back those vehicles in.
Right, yes.
The, the U-Haul in my town, we have a real serious issue with people bringing a truck back, and materials that they didn't get rid of some other way, they just throw it across the property line onto the neighbor's property. And uh I could see that possibility happening here again with it backing right up to the property line like
I believe, I have to double check this, I believe there's gonna be fencing all around the property, there was a fencing, there is a fencing detail. Yeah, there's a fencing detail here. So it's gonna be a mesh chain link with, looks like, looks like barbed wire on top, actually.
Okay.
But it's also shows a gate there.
No, not barbed wire, just uh, yeah, a gate and uh
That gate, if it's a key gate for storage units, uh, and you, units coming back, I don't know if they got enough uh room off the road there, pool there to the gate or not, that's kind of tight there a little bit.
They'll have to give the gate key to return to U-Haul after hours too.
Yeah, and uh, there's a lot of issues here, I could talk on this now, because I'm not on the board, but uh um, they did take out some of the tree line along thirty two, where their gate is. They haven't taken the tree line out on the southern end along thirty two. But on the south side, there's apartment house right there, and they showed no landscaping along that south fence line, which, if you have apartment houses there part of that driveway was across the line, because that used, that driveway also used to access that building. So
Yeah, you can see that.
Yeah. So when they put that, the because it was subdivision, uh, it was a lot line done when I was still on the board for this, so I do know that part of it. And yet, in that building there is apartments, and you got apartments across the road there. Uh that shed, or that barn too, is there I don't know, maybe under advisory comments, we what, might want to mention the check on the structural of it, because it said a shed, barn. And it's kind of a pole building, uh, old building, with lean twos on the front and the back, and Ag markets mentioned to farmers at uh, Bob Sumner's years ago, that if you were going to sell have a little store, don't do it in an old barn, because you'd need to have it up to structural code to bring the public in. He said, just build a little road stand next to the old barn, and not have people in an old barn, and I don't know what the structural comments on this would be if you were having, bringing public in underneath that, in a storage unit.
They're proposing it act the building itself for self-storage, so
Yeah, but i- if it was built kind of cheap and everything out, it, yeah, it's held over the years, but it's kind of low on those eaves, uh, you got just enough headroom to get under there, there's not much headroom, so
That's more of a building inspector.
Rob, what do you got for comments, Rob?
Yeah, let's move along here, uh, okay. I mean, it looks like we're gonna have a few more comments based on our things, but conforming sign.
Nice dot conforming sign and, and lighting comment, and then the other comments we're gonna add is our comments relative to landscaping on the south side. All right, and then, and then Mike's comment with respect to uh, making sure that that fencing is adequate for that, for the um, for the, the uh uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the U-Haul. Uh, I would tend, I, I appreciate Mr. Wilkins' comments, I would tend to leave that, that alone, because that's a, that's a code issue, that's a building a building code issue, not a, not a site plan issue.
The other thing Want any truck turnplates for backing of the U-Haul trucks, I mean, some of those are pretty big trucks. They're not just, I mean, unless
Comment, if they're gonna bring U-Haul trucks in there to make sure they have the turnaround capability.
Right, I
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay, well, some sort of traffic a- access.
The seeker isn't really complete, the applicant did not complete the secret form, it's uh, like a two-generational secret form that he submitted, I don't know how he got it. But uh, and the town, I don't believe typed it, he, on the referral slip, they have it as a type two action, but when you read the minutes they said they were gonna take lead agent, but they never typed the type of action it is. So it'd be, and so the area disturbance is just over an acre, but that doesn't really say wh- what it is, it's very up near what the area disturbance is.
All right, so now, now we've got, now we've got um, a comment on, on stormwater, a comment on um, turning, turning plates. Um, a turning templates, I'm sorry, uh, and, and um, and the other comments that I mentioned. Any other comments we're looking at? Did they supply a seeker, Rob, in, in?
There is, there is a seeker form, but
No, no, I'm asking Rob if they sent a seeker to him with the referral.
Yeah, it's in the
They did.
Okay. Thank you. So if it's incomplete, we should say the seeker's not complete, so.
All right.
All right, so now we've got all those comments plus a seeker comment.
Okay.
Yep. Can I get a motion, guys?
Yeah.
No, no, Vivian.
Thank you. Right.
I think I got McCarthy in there as a second.
I got Jared Walton Brown. All right, let's move on.
Any, any further discussion, guys? All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent, motion passes, all right. Okay, we're still with, still on Placal with Newburg Fuel Distribution.
All right, don't remember this from a couple of months ago. This was the, a whole bunch of air variances next to the cemetery for knocking down the existing general store and putting in a convenience store and a um, fuel canopy. Um no seeker was sent on this, this day, it's a type two action, all the variances for it were granted. We issued many comments on that. So as you call, that's the existing conditions, that's proposed sites, all the access often two locations, they'll need approvals from DPW, we also suggested that they have comments from NIS dot given approximately thirty two. Um, they did provide a number of different truck turning templates with the proposal. As you can see. But we still have a number of comments, so DPW for access, NIS that for review for proximity from the state's route. Uh, there needs to be some, and these were comments from the local board as well, there needs to be protection of the adjoining cemetery. Uh, there's like a three-foot retain wall, and they were looking into whether it needed to be extended or raised. So they need to make sure that's done properly. Um, stormwater management from the site needs to be completed and shown, and should include oil separators. Uh, approvals from Elstoc County Health Department for septic uh, lighting details, don't have any lane details or photometrics for it, they'll need to do that, and it'd be dark sky compliant, LED fixtures. Uh, there's no dumpster, locate, enclosures noted on the plans, they'll need to provide that. There's no landscaping on this thing either, so they should provide landscaping details, all landscaping should be native species. And then, last but not least, just looking to sustainability, especially as it relates to EV charging stations. Giving that it's a fuel dispensary.
We're gonna add one more, Rob, and that's snow removal, right?
We're gonna add snow removal, apparently, okay.
I thought we had a comment too on the, during the variance about parking on, on the public roadway.
Yeah, we'll add that one too.
That's, that's, that's DPW comment, yep, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. The uh, on, when you check the truck turning uh, templates, the CBA member did mention and they didn't change it, I just see on the plans there, the fuel truck they're showing whether that's the right wheelbase or not, but they're showing a cab over truck. And the wheelbase on that versus a conventional truck are totally different, and so if, if they were basing that on a cab over truck, that'd be a lot shorter turning we uh, turning frame than what a conventional cab would be. That, that is something to look into, and they haven't changed that, so I don't know if that's an issue or not. Because you don't see any money cab overs anymore.
All right.
And then, uh, yeah, you mentioned the uh, the seeker that the CBA did determine it was a type two action.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I reached out to the planning board and said, where's the seeker, and I looked at it again, and said, oh, it's type two, and they got back to me and said, yep, you're right.
Yeah.
So with all those comments, anybody? Motion, motion to approve staff comments, Mike Baden.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. We're slightly over halfway done.
All right, we're gonna try to, well, I will try to move it along a little bit.
Drew, I'm, Mike Baden, I'm recusing on the next six local laws.
Okay.
All right, so we'll do them one at a time, but um so we have laws, local laws D through I is what we're gonna be doing, so local law D is the repealing and replacing or prohibited uses list, already on there were such things as expl- was the um fracking laws, and storage treatment of natural gases or exploration or production materials, hazardous materials and bulk fuel materials, this one expand, repeals it, but also expand, it keeps those in there, but adds on, so things like solid waste landfills, processing or storage facilities, household hazards, waste collection, radioactive materials. No county impact on that particular law.
Motion McCarthy.
Tech and Vivian.
All right, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Very good, passes, okay. Okay, local law number E.
Literally. Okay, so the town is modifying their front yard setback, basically what is their, redefine the way they're measuring it, and they're not redefining front yard setback, but they're changing the way they measure it based on type of use, so from NIS dot or DPW slash county roads local roads and private roads are changing that, and they're also expanding their way they handle front yard setbacks from um waterfront yards, it's from name streams and wetlands, depending on the type. There's no county impact on this.
Motion McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Watkins.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Perfect. Motion passes, hey, Robert.
Local F. So, the town is flip-flopping with location of where uh, the animal husbandry and, and the um, oops. It looks like I skipped a slide here, hang on.
That's right.
That's right, so agricultural use subsection is flip-flopping location statute with the animal husbandry law, but that's not all, there are actually menus statute too, so not only are they gonna encourage agricultural infirmations in ag districts, which certain state, actually they say county, county certified ag districts throughout the law, we might want to make an advisory that it's actually state certified county old agricultural districts. So I'll just make that a little advisory comment on that, uh, but they're also encouraging it in other zones as well, the AR three, AB three, and A ten zones. Um, they're also allowing animal agricultural uses permitted by right, if not in certified agricultural district, and they are ten, they are three, AB three, B and R five. They require site plan review and several other categories, but it's strictly prohibited unless in an ag district in the I zone. And, this one was also I'm on slides. Bear with me. This is still the same one. Okay, and they just also may put different um, regulations for open storage, nor where it can be looked at on the property with respect to a residential structure, these are all things, if it's not in a certified agricultural district. Uh, also fire code, building code references for agricultural use structures consistent with state law, uh, then also they allow farm stands as an accessory in all districts but have certain standards, a hundred and fifty square feet max, minimum one parking space with that comply with the locals front, local setbacks, and only are limited to a twelve square foot of signage. I believe, that was that was no county impact on that as well.
McCarthy again, to accept mo- um, recommendations.
Tech and Vivian.
Rob.
Oh, actually, that was an advisory comment. I may be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, weren't didn't you say you were gonna add advisory?
It's advisory common. So it was the state certified districts, just changing their reference to make it correct.
Okay, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Motion passes. Okay, local law G.
Yeah, this is the animal husbandry law. So it basically. Regulates the number. And type by type of different and size of different animals than where they can be. Uh, it's can they reference the Animal Welfare Act in nineteen sixty six. Uh, pro specifically prohibits exactly wild animals in all districts. So no Tiger King down Rochester. Let's see. Our comment though is that we just want to make sure that it's consistent with. As a reference, as a required modification, actually. That they be done consistent with um New York State African market law is a required mod and not that reference that in the law. That's the only requirement on that.
Motion to approve Vivian. Motion to approve Vivian.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. All right. And now local law H. Rochester.
This is the town's wetlands and stream buffer. Um, law, it's a new law, new section of the zoning statute. And they're trying to. Accomplish provide drainage and flood control, protect surface, subsurface and subsurface water, sort sort bad sheds. Uh, treated polluted surface and subsurface waters and doing all sorts of preserving open space, things of that nature. Law is a bit vague and confusing in that. They have setbacks in the law and then they have repairium buffers. And that they define wetlands as everything that has hydric soil. In it. And that they don't necessarily allow disturbance within that buffer or within any of the wetlands. They do allow some, there's some uses that are allowed, but like um. Utilities um. And let's see. Utilly flood control maintenance arose public accident recreational uses and fences were allowed to non paved trails. So some comments that we had on it were. Come on. This thing is going a little slow. Sorry, guys. There we go. So. Oh, come on. There we go. Tell me. So we one we'd asked, oh, this is not very well. Sorry, guys. Stay. So what we'd ask suggest that they do is that they eliminate. Um. Hydric soils from it that instead use the federal guidelines without mentioning the hydric soils. And that they allow the planning board to reduce buffers on a case by case basis, depending on. The uh the wetland location and that the size. The minimum size should be consistent with the federal size. What they should be trying to do here is rather than put buffers around every single hydric. Wetland, they should mirror the federal regulations in case the federal regulation government say they relaxed the standards and they. Made more um. Less restricts. At least the town could maintain regulation of federal wetland size. Uh, wetlands, but to go to the hydric level, you're talking. Uh, there's quite a mon- uh number. Quite a lot of hydric soils in the town of Rochester. That would be. Quite a bit of regulation and. Um, development opportunities lost.
They they do. Maybe they want to do that.
Yeah, I I get that, but but still, there's there's no minimum size requirement. There's the disturbance area is less, et cetera. So. We 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 think that, you know, that's a bit, it's a bit over, A, it's a bit overkill and B is is that it it's vague enough that it's confusing. Uh, and that and we're not touching the areas that you're talking about relative to stream stream buffers. That's relatively well writ. Well, written and documented, but the wetland stuff is just they need, they really need to to separate it out and and think about it a little bit differently than they have. Um, and and set the and set stream buffers in there and set wetland buffers and. And do it separately and 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 get it straight. And and we would, we think that the the federal statute is 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 pretty protective.
But not enforced.
The federal statute is enforced. You know, the the concern is is that you never know what the federal government's gonna do. Um, and there could be different rulings.
That's my point.
Well, I. I all I know is is that the work that we do, the the federal regulations are fairly well enforced.
Okay, and I know that through my experience on the planning board that uh, you know, the D C is expecting us to tell them how big the wetlands are. So they don't have to come out and do it.
So. Oh, no, this doesn't change. Mark, this doesn't change the idea that somebody has to go out and map them. This doesn't change that. It just it just basically changed in terms of what what they're mapping.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to sports staff.
All right, we have a second.
Yeah, McCarthy.
Any further, any further discussion?
Isn't the federal wetlands minimum twelve and a half acres?
No, that's state.
Okay.
All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Okay, local law I.
Local law I is amendments to their nonconforming new section under statute. So. What they're doing, most of this is very. Good here. So they're adding expansion includes max increase of twenty five percent original footprint. Um, normal maintenance repair section, they added alterations such as roof replacement or interior renovations that result. And extended or increased nonconforming use of structure. So that they would require a permit. As part of that, so. Uh, they also changed the timeframe of restoration, replacement or replacement with expansion from five years to eighteen months. So they these things can't linger around. Um, expansions will require a special permit, not just site plan reviews they currently do. Replacements require a building permit. Uh, no longer allows expansion onto another lot, even if immediately Jason, the old will allow that. Uh, or at least I should say the current law. It also ended standards for abandonment and reestablishment. And they also have a section, new section on uh nonconforming lots of record and. They made note of their recently adopted ADU section that allows ADUs regardless. Of it being a nonconforming lot, so. No county impact on this.
Motion. I motion to support staff.
Okay, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Motion passes. Mike, Mike, before we go move on, I just got a quick question for you, Mike. Why why did you keep? Why did you make these all separate? Local laws as opposed to one big local law?
Because we're rewriting pretty much our entire code and rather than stretching out the process and doing public hearings on. Every sex, you know, the entire thing, which sometimes go on for hours. By doing it chapter by chapter, it's it's moving much smoother. And we're trying really hard to stay in that six month window of the moratorium.
Okay, thanks.
That's the reason. And I'm I'm back on the board now for McCarthy. I'm not recused on this one.
Okay. All right, Robert, any any anybody would accuse for on the McCarthy. Rochester subdivision? Okay.
So McCarthy subdivision is a four lot subdivision, which on further review probably didn't need to be referred. This while a portion of it is indeed. In the hundred year floodplain, none of the proposed driveways, which is the uh the threshold we use for being referred for under five lots. Actually, in the hundred year floodplain, we won't make a comment that needs health department approval, though. So that'd be the required mod.
Motion is court staff. Watson.
Second and Mike Baden.
Hey. Any further discussion? All those opposed? And any abstentions? Very good. Motion passes. Okay, now we're in the town of Sargades. Any recusals? Okay, Robert.
All right. Fair brothers. This is a. King's Highway. We reviewed this a while ago last year for an expansion with the new storage building. This is a new solar. Uh, area in this location here on the property. There you go to here's there. That was McCarthy. So seventy six, it's not even a large one, seven sixty cable kilowatt ground mounted solar ray. That's gonna be it. It's me screened. With an access point also accessible from. The property itself. As you can see, it's a pretty flat site. Uh, doesn't need a sweat based on what we've been seeing with the uh. Mounting.
Recommendations, Rob?
Wildlife fencing would be the only required modification on this. And as well, the sweat will not be needed. They didn't provide a decommissioning plan. So don't need to provide that.
Motion to sports staff.
Second Vivian.
Okay, any further discussion?
Anybody recuse on that one?
Don't buy no.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
All those two, that was for two numbers, by the way.
Right. All those. Uh, opposed? Any extensions? Very good. Motion passes. All right, we're still in the town of Sargades for the red onion. Any recusals? All right, Robert, it's all yours.
Our red onion existing restaurants gonna expand. To the rear of the structure. Uh, get it. It's on uh. Two group two twelve and sort of these just. That's it. So you have the restaurants over in here are gonna be expanding toward the back. Go back to the slide. So it's um it's well a twelve hundred square foot expansion, mostly for the kitchen. So they did a pretty nice job on it. Existing access, no changes to the access.
Do they have any parking?
Hmm.
Do they have any parking? Sometimes it's hard to park there.
Hmm.
They did not.
See, now there's no new parking.
Yeah, all the expansions in the kitchen, so.
Yeah, so but we did make comment about health department. And we have another case of a rear yard variance not being referred that was approved. Make that comment. Uh, didn't get any lane details of any lighting updates that are necessary. They should send those along. Um, think they should look at any sustainability features that practical with the property. Solar, any alternative heating for that example. And the um while they're using, they seem to be using the existing septic and weld or not new it on the site plan and should be.
Motion to sports.
So. Okay, thank you.
Second Vivian.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Okay, now we're on to the village of Sargades. Any recusals?
All right. Okay, Penmont Road Streets, this house right here, not in historic district. We're expanding it. There is no county impacts.
Second Baden.
Right. Any further discussion? All right, all those opposed?
That's what's.
Any extensions? Terrific. Motion passes. And close to the end, guys. All right.
Working on it.
Village of Sargades, what again? Partitioned.
So this is the air variance. Again, we saw this. Remember, there was gonna be a five story building and we wondered about. It's historic character. Well, they've come back with a three story building. And listen to a lot of the feedback, actually, so. Emma. It's round. Ah, went right past. So. So as you can see, it's much more blending in with the surrounding architecture. They actually did put windows on both sides this time. So the variances, they need one parking spot and they need a couple side yard variances on it. So only advisory comment would be that they still need. Um, shipos to sign off on that and their certificate appropriateness from the local historic district.
We're gonna make a comment, Rob, that that they really did that the the changes were significant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We wanna we wanna make a comment saying that the comments came that they listened to the comments and they really did a good job redoing the building.
Yeah, this is.
Motion and support staff.
Second, Mike Baden.
I removed it in beginning.
Okay, hey, Dennis, that do they actually in that row, do they have a side yard setback? I mean, wouldn't, I know it's a town board thing, but wouldn't in that row a zero side yard setback make sense with those?
Couldn't tell you, Mike. They obviously thought they did because they went and got a variance for it.
Yeah, I that just doesn't make sense in that row.
It doesn't. I I agree with you.
Yeah.
For finer information, that's the village parking lot in back there. It's not a road here.
Yeah.
Oh, we know. I know Vince. I'm talking about side yard between the properties.
Yeah, no, it should be zero lot line. I don't get it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I I have Vince with the motion and Mr. Watkins is the second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those opposed? Any extensions? Very good. Motion passes.
All right, we already did all again.
Right, now we're the town of Ulster. Frank, you still.
Still excused, right?
All right. So. Good to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm quiz would be would be recused.
Cue.
Yep.
Yep, so Washington Avenue. Get there. So we have. Olympic diner and we have, I think, most recently a liquor store. These are gonna be demoed. And we're gonna see a multiple story. Climate controlled self storage building in its place. Access would be from. All access would be from Sandy Road. So they have full access at that location onto the state route. So they don't need any approvals from NISDOT. And given that they be changing from self storage use to from a restaurant news and from. A retail use would actually see less fewer vehicle trips. From just based on that's. That alone, we do have some comments from the city of Kingston. Respect to the gateway and the sopas at this area. Uh, what else we got? So it's ninety two thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. Um, so accesses to, like I said, is really a sandy road. Uh, average tenant visits per day would be about fourteen with seven spaces provided and two more spaces at the loading dock. No more. They don't expect no more than five vehicles parked at any one time at the site. Oops. So. Existing conditions. That's the proposal. So they are gonna need a flood development permit. They are gonna be raising it up. Three feet. As you can see. Um. It looks. It looks like they're installing retaining walls, but we don't have a retainable detail. So we'd ask for that. See how they're handling that. Those have pretty good landscaping on the site. Lighting is okay. Need some signage details. We like to see a rendering or a photo simulation, what this thing looks like from the street and from the creek. Went too fast. So want to consider architecture. Respective of the Kingston, you know, the gateway to Kingston and. The landscaping and also photo simulation. They should show what it looks like from the creek and from the uh. Washington Avenue flood development permit, as I mentioned, they'll need sign up from shipo with respect to this. Signage should be conforming to the town standards. I believe based on my discussions with them, they're gonna put one wall sign and that was it. The applicant has been consulted on geothermal and roof mount solar and they're looking into it. But we'll make.
The other thing we asked Rob was that them to, to sort of take a look and prove out their parking, their parking demand, right? Did we ask them to do that?
Did we? I mean, they already.
I thought we did. You know, they, they, they claim they only need that many spaces, but there's an awful lot of square footage here. You know, so we just asked them to take a look and, and, and. Provide some counts from their other, there, there's a big organization, provide some counts from other areas. It says, that's their parking demand.
Okay.
All right, anybody?
Want to make the motion?
Motion McCarthy.
Second Baden.
All right, any further discussion?
So it's three stories tall. We feel the landscaping is adequate.
That's why we want to see the rendering, the uh, the photo simulations. I mean, we do, it does provide a lot more, there's more landscaping than there is now. Right now, it's a. Blacktop parking lot with no landscaping whatsoever. Uh, but it is on the sides next to where the residence is on both sides and there is some long fringe and. From the building itself. So it's better than what's there right now. But we don't know what it looks like with respect. Yeah, that's what I want to see the photo simulation to.
How are they raising the uh, building three feet? What is the?
Phil.
Just what is Phil? Okay. So the, the retaining wall would be new because of that, or is there already a slope?
Now, that, that, that site's coming up quite a bit.
Okay, which would in, in, increase the impact visually as well?
Right.
Yes, does.
Okay, anyone else with discussion?
There's a community character discussion under seeker and we'll raise that as well.
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Okay. Town of Woodstock, any recusals? Okay, Robert.
Local law one is basically a uh, to allow libraries in the L I zoning district. There's no county impact on that.
Don't move. Second.
Seconded that. Mr. Watkins, there we go.
Yeah.
I didn't catch the motion.
Baden.
Uh, thank you.
Baden.
All right, any further discussion? All those opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion passes. Very last one with Woodstock. Any?
All right.
Okay.
Town Woodstock's proposing a water district wellhead protection law, which includes an overlay district, which goes from Bearsville. Hamlet all the way to the Woodstock Hamlet. And what they're trying to do here is protect the app for here is pretty well designed law. So there's new standards for development within that overlay district. So certain types of uses. That protect the water supply are not allowed. So hazardous uses, over uses of the water supply. Things of that nature. Are not, no longer be allowed. And then development may have required by special permit. And that would be the uh. The district boundary, boundary of it. Notice that there is quite a bit of floodplain. Within this area as well, so that we would recommend that they extend these protections in that area to the floodplain as well. And that is our comments is advisory.
Or it's, I would like to support the staff.
Mike Baden a second.
Thank you, Mitch.
Baden second.
Got it.
All right, any further discussion on this one? All right, all those opposed? Any extensions? Terrific. Motion passes. We're done.
Drew, real, real quick, just a, a point to bring up. We, we seem to be adding a sustainability comment on an awful lot of, of referrals and. That may be a good training if, if another planning board member. Or group of members wants to work with me on putting something together. I know Amanda, you're pretty well versed on it and I know some other people. Uh, you know, to take the, the load off of Dennis, but maybe we could put something together. Whether.
I think.
That, that sounds like a good idea.
I think that's a great idea. And I, just so you know, we've tasked Amanda with coming up with a, a white paper on, on sustainability. Um. I think. Buckle down and, and I would, I would bring Amanda, Amanda LaValle in as well.
Absolutely.
And, and put, put together a really good presentation. That would be great. That would be really, really great.
Maybe in early fall sometime and you know, give us a few months to get it put together, but.
Hey Dennis, are we gonna meet the person next month again?
It depends upon. Emergency order, you know that one, Vince. If I have to, I have to. If we have to, we have to.
Motion to support Mike Biden.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
So we're, we're adjourned, guys.
All right.
I'll make my motion to end the meeting.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Everybody have a great summer. Enjoy the rest of your summer. We'll see you in August.
All right, thank you, guys.
Have a good night. Good night, everybody.